Thank you. Let's go ahead and get started. It is August 8th, 2022. The council chambers on Maple Avenue, and we've got three items on the agenda tonight. IPL capacity update, also EDC discussion, Staywell discussion, and board and commission discussions. If I could, with the agreement of my fellow council members, can we move the Staywell discussion to item number one and readjust the agenda with your permission?
No objection.
No objection?
Fine with me.
Would that be good? All right. Please proceed. We'll talk about the Staywell program first.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and all of our guests here this evening. My name is Zach Walker, and I'm the city manager for the City of Independence. Over the past six years, I've worked with my staff to address the city council's strategic goal of achieving financial sustainability. I'm extremely proud of the work we've done to build a more solid foundation. By exercising fiscal restraint, strong financial management, strategic use of intergovernmental revenue, and numerous other strategies, the city has been able to maintain, while avoiding, the city's been able to maintain basic services while avoiding staffing reductions, employee forlows, or the use of reserve funds. We've worked with our loggers retirees to implement structural changes that provide our Medicare-eligible retirees and their eligible spouses and dependents with a solid health insurance plan while creating much-needed liquidity for the city. We've created an ongoing revenue stream to pay our economic development debt service obligations without using general fund revenues. We've consolidated city departments to reduce our overhead expenses. We've worked with our partners and organized labor to address our accrued leave liabilities for sick leave payouts and other benefit changes, and we've made proposals to help curtail our overtime expenditures, an issue the personnel board will take up this Friday. But we have never fully addressed one of our most rapidly increasing expenses: health insurance costs for our active employees and our pre-65 retirees. I've heard from each of you at one point or another that you would like to see this issue resolved, if not permanently, at least for the foreseeable future. Tonight, we will lay out both the Staywell Committee's recommendations, as well as additional recommendations from city staff and our health insurance consultant for the city council. Before we get too far into this tonight, let's be clear: we are not discussing eliminating health insurance for anyone. Consistent with Resolution 6816, we are discussing mechanisms to ensure that the long-range financial sustainability of the Staywell Fund is met. The budget I submitted in May, and that was adopted by this council on June 21st, met the state constitutional requirement and addressed a $5.35 million deficit in the General Fund. We accomplished this not by furloughs, vacant position savings, or other one-time gimmicks, nor did we accomplish this through staffing reductions, program and service reductions, or other measures that ultimately reduce basic services and quality of life in our community. Instead, we propose strategic changes to expenditures that are growing at unsustainable rates, such as health benefits. I fully recognize that these proposals will not be without controversy among many. However, recently released U.S. Census data verifies the stark reality our community faces. As I mentioned in my budget message, 2020 Census data indicates that 31% of the homes in Independence have a total household income below $35,000. Even more alarming is that 11% of households are below $15,000 annually in total income. While Missouri is seeing strong economic growth and low unemployment rates, which stands at 3.7% statewide, in Independence, we have an unemployment rate almost double, 6.5%. As Independence employees, we must realize that we are fortunate to have salary and benefit packages that exceed the total household income of more than one-third of our residents. We must then answer this fundamental question: are we here to serve or to be served? We must remain cognizant of our need to provide a competitive salary and benefit plan, and honoring our obligations while maximizing the value of services our citizens underwrite. Reducing city services at the expense of addressing our benefits plan is not a model that I could recommend as your manager. City Council Resolution 17729 adopts a policy that the city will endeavor to maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance in the General Fund equal to 16% of annual operating revenue. Through the leadership of this city council and strong financial management by your city staff, the unrestricted fund balance for the General Fund is projected to rise to 12% in the 2223 fiscal year. While this is significant improvement to the city's overall financial position, the increase is not structural in nature, as it reflects savings primarily from personnel vacancies and one-time intergovernmental revenues. This is the final year of a pandemic grant subsidy for our transit operations. Sustaining this service will require an additional $1.2 million in General Fund expenditures beginning next year. This is also the final year of subsidy for our Health Department, which over the last two years has enjoyed a total $600,000 subsidy from pandemic grant revenues. As the chart below indicates, expenditure growth is outpacing revenue growth in this city. This structural imbalance leaves a projected ending fund balance of negative $3 million by fiscal year 2627. This is not a sustainable trend, as it does not provide the city with resources to navigate any further economic disruption, or flexibility to make strategic investments or service enhancements within the financial plan period. Over these last six years, a focus has been placed on prioritizing services, managing expenditures, and developing and executing plans to address the ongoing structural imbalances that have negatively impacted the city's financial position and service delivery for many years. This required the collaboration and support of the city council, city leaders, bargaining units, and other critical stakeholders. The city has taken steps to address OPEB liabilities, compensated absences, restructuring debt, and many other initiatives to address legacy practices and modernize your city operations. Continued stabilization of the city's financial condition require further efforts to critically examine and prioritize services, evaluate revenue options, as well as focus on attracting investment and other initiatives to grow the economy. This chart shows the current census data for the health insurance plan. There are 965 post-employment retirees and dependents, 300, in the pre-65 category, 324 pre-65 retirees and dependents, and 2,203 active employees and dependents. The Staywell Fund is pretty straightforward. It's an internal fund that supports the city's self-insured plans. Funding comes from just two sources: plan members and Independence taxpayers. For every dollar that goes into this fund, 20 cents comes from plan members, and 80 cents comes from the taxpayer's wallet. Controlling our health insurance cost doesn't just preserve our basic services for our citizens, it keeps the city's hand out of the taxpayer's wallet to satisfy our ever-increasing expenses in this category. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Jonathan Crass from CBIS, our health insurance consultant, to share with you a menu of options for achieving long-range financial sustainability. But let me be clear: none of these options must be act upon or mandated. This is ultimately the city council's final decision, but balance that against the need to provide basic services in this community. With that, I'll ask Jonathan to come up and run through our presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Jonathan Crass. I'm a senior county executive with CBIS Benefits and Insurance Services.
Can you pull the microphone really close, so people that are watching online, they can see it, and we record it, it picks up too?
Better?
I would straighten it out just like this, so it's pointing right at you.
Better?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Again, my name is Jonathan Crass. I'm a senior county executive at CBIS Benefits and Insurance Services here in Kansas City. We've been working with the City of Independence since the beginning of 2021 on the Staywell Plan and other employee benefits. And I'd like to talk today about some items regarding the benefits renewal, the upcoming goals for the year, and a longer-term strategy. This is the agenda for the slides. We'll talk about the current state of the program. We'll talk about the Staywell recommendation, have some discussion there. Talk about program goals, timelines, have some discussion around illustrative program strategy, and then finally, we'll end with a multi-year program design and city management recommendation. This is, I find these presentations are a little easier when it's more discussion, so if you have questions, please feel free to stop me and pepper me with questions at any point. This is the current state of the program. These are the three plans offered by the Staywell Plan. We've got OAP 1, OAP 2, and the Local Plus Plan. Current contributions, both the employee contribution, the city portion, and then the And this mess of numbers is overall enrollment and contributions by plan, by actives and retiree. Overall, we've got 1,128 people on the plan for a projected total funding of $19.3 million. It's enrollment and contributions as of June of this year, so it's pretty fresh So that takes us through the current state. Now let's talk about how we've been planning for next year. We've been partnering with the Staywell Committee and Finance and Administration to work on different scenarios for plan design, for contributions, for overall strategy for the plan, and our most recent iteration of a scenario from Staywell is described here. Represents plan design changes to OAP 1, a 5% funding increase to the actives on OAP 1, and a 40% funding increase to the pre-65s on OAP 1, maintaining the current 80/20 split. No change in plan design, funding, or contribution split for OAP 2. And then for Local Plus, due to IRS regulations, we have to increase the minimum deductible on that plan to 1,500, and then 3,000 for family. No increase to funding, and no change in contribution split. This also recommends the addition of a new plan, and the new plan is a high-deductible plan without a city-sponsored HSA contribution, $3,500 deductible for singles, $7,000 for families, with an out-of-pocket max of $7,000 for singles and 14 for family. This represents a, for the funding, we would decrement the funding rates based on OAP 2, and then an 87/13 split for the contributions. The concept behind this plan is to offer a low-cost or free plan for employees, with the target being to have a zero-cost employee contribution for singles. People who have dependent tiers, so spouse, child, and family, would pay a contribution, but those contributions would be less than any of the three existing plans. The benefits are, on the new plan, though, are less rich than any of the existing plans.
Mr. Crass?
Yes.
Just a question there on this page, and that is, is, in your opinion, is it a good idea for us not to have any increase in funding?
Excuse me, sorry.
On, to not have any increase in funding on OAP 1, or excuse, OAP 2, or Local Plus? Is that, I mean, with healthcare costs increasing every year, I'm concerned about that, so I just wonder.
I agree, and that's one of the concerns we have about the plan that we'll get to in a slide or two. But that's a good point.
Okay, sorry, I'm ahead of you.
Skipping ahead, thank you. These are the proposed plan designs for the four plans being offered next year. Under the Staywell scenario, OAP 1, 2, Local Plus, and the new plan, the plan design changes to OAP 1 are bolded, the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum. There'll be no change to copays, either office visit, emergency room, or pharmacy. These are the proposed contributions under the Staywell scenario, representing the increases to OAP 1 active and OAP 1 pre-65 retiree. This page shows the increase year-over-year for the active employees. And the pre-65 retirees showing the 40% increase, and then no change to OAP 1, or, sorry, OAP 2, or Local Plus. Contributions to the new plan there at the bottom. So this is the overall total funding for the Staywell recommended scenario. The 2022 funding totals, so what we're paying now, employees spend about just shy $3.7 million. The city spends about 15 and 1/2 for a total of $19.2 million. The projected totals, based on this scenario, are $3.9 million for the employees, about $16.9 for the city, for an overall total of $20.8 million. It's an increase of $238,000 for employees, $1.35 million for the city, an overall total of about $1.6 million increase. The bottom half of this page represents the numbers as projected by CBIS actuaries. We have a funding algorithm that we run, rolling 24 months of claims through, to come up with a projection for the following year. The initial projection out of the gate with no plan changes, no enrollment changes, no new plans, so as-is, represents an increase to the plan projected of 20.6% or about $3.96 million. With these changes, so the plan design changes to OAP 1, the addition of the new plan with a 10% active migration to the new plan represents about a 12.9% increase, or about $2.5 million. So our projection represents a total required funding of $21.7 million. The Staywell scenario generates a total funding of $20.8 million. That's a shortfall created by the Staywell scenario of just shy of $900,000.
Just to be clear, so you're saying the proposal from the Staywell Committee results in underfunding the potential, expected liability of the fund by almost $900,000?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I'll stop at that for now.
So these are our concerns with the Staywell recommendation. First, being, as just mentioned, the overall plan funding. Per the prior slide, the scenario is almost $900,000 short of the recommended funding. Second, to your point earlier, Councilman Fears, the, there's no increase to OAP 2 or Local Plus. And if there's enough migration from OAP 1 to OAP 2 or Local Plus, it's possible that those plans could become underfunded, meaning there's not enough money to pay for the claims on those plans if there's not an appropriate premium increase to those high-deductible plans. If the entire increase for funding is placed on OAP 1, only one with an increase, but then people leave that plan, there's no additional funding to the plan for the additional expected increase in claims. The plan would be underfunded.
So staying with this line of thought, maybe I'm a little premature on this, but the HSA funding, is that included in this scenario too?
No.
With people porting over from 1 to 2, and the funding that would be put into that?
No. The city-sponsored HSA funding is not included in our projections, straight claims. Our third concern is the rates for the new plan. The rates for the new plan would be decremented based on OAP 2. So there's about, in plan value, there's about a 20% difference between OAP 2 and the new plan, in terms of expected actuarial value. And creating rates for the new plan without increasing rates for OAP 2, first, it is likely that the new plan's rates will be too low. Given the low contributions by design, it's possible the plan will be, again, over-enrolled and underfunded. And lastly, this does not represent a significant structural change to the Staywell Plan as a whole that'll keep us from being in this position next year and in future years. So it's not a long-term plan. Further, once the ARPA funds are exhausted, and the city contribution to Staywell is reduced significantly, the current cost share will be unsustainable between the city and employees. The scenario does not begin to position the plan for that reduction in funds that will happen next year, and when preparation for 2024 starts next year, we'll be even farther behind the eight ball. Either a significant contribution increase for employees, or significant plan design change for employees, or both, will be required to keep the plan from bankrupting, and they'll be very significant, given the past few years of negligible and minimal increases in plan changes that'll cause some drastic friction with employees. Those are our concerns with the Staywell recommendation.
And so just to be clear, you've had, you've run actuarial kind of calculations on this, and these, you know, even with those, based on those actuarial questions, or, you know, calculations, these concerns remain in, you know, given the proposal from the Staywell Committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There is one part of the Staywell recommendation that we do agree with, and that's regarding the pharmacy program. One of the items, one of the evaluations we've performed for the plan since working with the city is a market review of the pharmacy program. Last year, we worked with Cigna and our national pharmacy team to market the city's pharmacy benefit program. Pharmacy claims are run through a pharmacy benefit manager. Cigna owns their own pharmacy benefit manager, Express Scripts. There are others in the market. Our pharmacy team reviewed the claims and costs associated with the plan currently and the contract through Cigna. We did the evaluation last year, sent the plan out to market, and we were able to negotiate with Cigna an expected cost avoidance of $650,000 for this current plan year. We did the same analysis earlier this year for the plan, given the 2022 contract from Cigna and the 2023 expected costs in the market, and had an initial savings projection for carving out the program of over $700,000. That is through a move through to CBS Caremark as the pharmacy benefit manager, through the Employers' Health Pharmacy Coalition, using the PrudenRx Specialty Pharmacy Management Program. Cigna, being the professionals that they are, wanted to negotiate with us on the pharmacy program, so they did. They provided an updated pharmacy contract for 2023, and that reduced the savings projection from $700,000 to $350,000. So still savings to carve out under the exact same arrangement we had been pursuing initially. Proceeding with adoption will result in breaking of the multi-year contract with Cigna, which would incur financial penalties to the plan. However, all of those penalties have been accounted for in our projections. So, yes.
If I can interrupt, so how much was the penalty, if I can ask, or?
There were several penalties. There was, there's a per-member-per-month penalty for the remainder of the contract, which is through 2024. That's about $100,000. There's a fee to carve out and have data sent to an external pharmacy benefit manager, and there's a reduction in the well-being funds provided by Cigna. Total penalties, I believe, come to around $300,000.
And still with those, we still net out the numbers you were talking about earlier?
That's correct.
If I'm correct, okay. Thank you. Proceed.
So, again, we do agree with this. For the long-term viability of the plan, the carve-out of the pharmacy program to CBS Caremark with Employers' Health would result in improved contracting, improved cost containment, and annual contract improvement with CBS and tighter cost control methods for the plan. When we're looking at a plan, we always want to figure out, what are the goals of the plan? And we think for the Staywell Plan, there are three goals. Three goals we have in working with the plan. First is the sustainability of the Staywell Fund. Second is to be good stewards of the city dollars. And third, to provide a quality benefit offering for employees and retirees and their families. Since we've been working with the city since beginning of last year, we've worked on a couple timelines. This is one of the initial timelines we presented at the beginning of last year at a Staywell Committee meeting, looking at for, from 2021 through 2023, how to work with plan design, plan funding, and employee contributions for the plan. There was no premium or contribution increase to the plan for January 1st of 2021, but it was communicated to employees that there would be, there could potentially be one in mid-year. So effective July 1st of 2021, we increased funding and contributions by 10%. Then we looked for 2022 to modify plan design to encourage consumerism and health improvement, increase funding pursuant to our funding calculation, and increase contributions based on funding requirements and business needs, and a similar program for 2023. We've taken this and updated it, or projected it out a couple more years. So the new annual mantra is, for plan design, we'll modify plan design to encourage consumerism, health improvement, and mitigate funding requirements. For plan funding, we'll increase pursuant to CBIS funding calculation, and for employee contributions, we'll modify based on funding requirements and business needs. So that takes us through our goals and strategies, and timelines. Now let's look at some strategies. These are all largely illustrative. But there are three components of a plan strategy, three things that we look at. And I describe many of them in the timelines that we reviewed before. Plan offering, which plans are we looking at? Plan design, the actual deductibles, out-of-pockets, et cetera, and then the employee contributions. We wanted to look on this slide at a multiple-year cost projection. So it's what happens if we do nothing versus what happens if we do something. The blue line represents what happens if we do nothing. The blue line represents taking the CBIS projection of 20.6% for 2023, and then an average increase of 12%. The do-something represents an annual increase of 10%. So some sort of cost control method to the plan to mitigate increase to 10%. Following the gap in these lines between 2023 and 2026, it's a projected cumulative savings over four years of $11 million, with about $4 million of that coming in 2026. And again, that's a conservative 12% of, for the do-nothing line, and a very conservative 10% for doing something.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why 20.6%, why are you projecting that? And that seems like an incredible increase in one year. Why are you projecting that level of cost?
So when we started working with the city in the beginning of last year, we did an initial projection for January 1st of 2021 to say, if there would have been an increase for the beginning of last year, which there was not, if there would have been, what do we feel it should have been? And at that point, we feel it should have been about 16%. There was a mid-year increase, so halfway through the year, of an increase of 10%. So net for the entire 12 months is a 5% increase. So we were recommending a 16, we were calculating 16% increase. The plan got net a 5% increase. So in our minds, we're already behind 11%. For 2022, there was an overall increase to the plan approved of 8%. I believe our funding calculation came out to around 20%. So again, we're behind about 12%. So if we're adding these up, we feel that the plan is behind roughly 20%. Taking those claims that got us to this point, the current situation with large claims and fixed costs with Cigna, our actuarial calculation comes out with a projected increase of 20.6% needed in additional funding. needed in additional funding for 2023.
Okay, thank you.
One item we've reviewed with the committee a number of times and, and with administration is plan design changes. These are increases to deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, et cetera. Each increase, while significant to the person utilizing the plan, represents some amount of savings overall to the plan, to the bottom line. These options are for OAP-1, and it takes the current plan design and runs through different iterations of deductible and out-of-pocket increases, where if we increase all the way to a $3,500 deductible and a $6,000 out-of-pocket, projected savings of about $1,000,000 and a half dollars. OAP-2, again, current scenario to...
Just a second, back up to, to one before, if you could. So, question I would have on this is, given the deductibles in this, that like after option two, three, or four, is OAP-1 then considered a high deductible healthcare plan or not?
It is a high deductible PPO because the deductible is high, but it does not become a qualified high deductible plan like OAP-2 and Local Plus because it still has copays for office visits, pharmacy, et cetera. It has what are called first-dollar benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though. OAP-2, again, a, a range of plan design changes, and further, we, we could go even higher on, on all of these plans. But for this initial range, going to the extreme, option four for OAP-2 represents a planned savings overall of $400,000. Why is this $3,500 so much less than OAP-1's $3,500? And that's because of enrollment. When you're making plan design changes, they're augmented by the amount of people enrolled in the plan, and OAP-1 has a very high enrollment, much higher than OAP-2 or Local Plus. So that's why the value of their plan design changes, while again, would be very impactful to those people on the plan, to the bottom line, these would be less significant than changes to OAP-1. And again, changes to Local Plus, kind of running the same deductible range as OAP-2. Again, the note about IRS changes required for this plan of increasing deductible to Another item we look at is contributions. So we've got two different scenarios to review here. The first, in terms of selecting an employee contribution, is the, this is called a percentage split. It's where the employer pays a set percentage of each tier, each premium tier towards the contribution, and the employee pays the rest. In this, there are two options. The top option is where the employer pays a different percentage for each tier. So employee only gets 77% contribution, spouse gets 75, et cetera, et cetera, in the blue highlighted red box. That results in, in this scenario, result, and this is completely example, both of these are completely example scenarios, they're not, not city plans whatsoever. The top scenario with the tiered percentage represents an employer spend of about $6.8 million. In the bottom scenario, where employer pays a flat percentage to all tiers, represents, where the employer pays 70% to all tiers, represents a total employer spend of $6.3 million. So that's where employer pays a percentage of whatever the premium is. The premium increases, decreases year, year over year. If the employer is locked into paying, paying a certain percent, their percentage goes up and down according to the increase to the plan. A way to help mitigate that is what's called a defined contribution. So in a defined contribution, the employer sets their contribution dollar amount to each tier or to every tier, and pays that amount regardless of employee's plan selection. So employees can buy up or buy down for different plans without impact to the employer. If the employer says, I'm going to pay $500 for every person enrolling in single coverage, then whether the person picks the plan that costs $1,000 a month or the plan that costs $502 a month, employer still pays $500. This really helps the employer protect the plan in the event of an unexpected enrollment shift, and really helps control employer spend for budgetary planning. It's a strategy we review with all of our clients. We really like to see it in place, at least move towards it because, again, from a budgeting perspective, from a strategy perspective, and then from a fairness perspective, it is, it's a nice strategy to use. So we wanted to look at a multi-year program design because health insurance is not, and just fix next year. It's not putting a Band-Aid on the situation. It's, it's structural change, it's long-term viability for the program as a whole. So our suggested program design for '23 through '25 detailed here. Again, a lot of numbers, I'll kind of hit some highlights from 2023. As always, we'd like to start with the CBS funding projection to make sure that the plan is funded appropriately, and then reduce based on, reduce funding based on any sort of plan decrements, new plan design, et cetera. For the plan offering, we'd like to keep the existing three plans and add the new plan that was included in the Staywell recommendation. We, we like the, the strategy of offering that low-cost plan. It's something we do with a number of our employers. It's good, it's a great recruiting retention strategy to offer that low-cost plan, and especially our younger employees are willing to choose a lower payroll deduction for a higher potential cost at point of service if they're not heavy users of the plan. In terms of plan design, we'd like to keep the plans, plan design for OAP-2 and Local Plus as is, but increase the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum to OAP-1 as described in the Staywell scenario. And as mentioned before, carve out the pharmacy to CBS Caremark. For active contributions, we'd like to move to a defined contribution based with, based on OAP-2 at an 82-18 split, so that current split for all tiers, and then increase or decrease contributions from there based on the defined contribution. For the pre-65 retirees, we'd also like to move to the defined contribution based on OAP-2 at an 80-20 split. Basing the defined contribution on OAP-2 follows our plan strategy by encouraging consumerism, as mentioned in the timelines before, and matches current and recent enrollment and migration trends that's, that have happened on the plans in the past couple of years. 2024, we would like to, again, with, with, use the CBS funding projection, don't have a recommended plan offering change at this time to keep things as is, plan design as required to mitigate the cost increase, and then move to defined contribution from OAP-2 based on an 80-20 for single employees and a 75-25 split for non-single employees, so employee, spouse, child, and family. And for pre-65s, a defined contribution based on OAP-2 at 70-30 single and 65-35 for Why are we differentiating contributions like this from, between active employees and pre-65 employees? In looking at plan costs for the past two and a half years, so between January 1st of 2020 and May 31st of 2022, we found that the active employees have had a net loss ratio of 93.8%. That means for every dollar in projected funding for the plan, there have been 94 cents spent on claims. However, for the pre-65 retirees, they've had a net loss ratio of 150%. So for every dollar collected in total funding, they've spent a buck and a half on claims. These claims are net of stop-loss reimbursements, do not include RX rebates, and do not include fixed costs, so just claims versus funding. The, the pre-65 retirees overall have had a higher claims exposure per person than active employees. The active employees have then been subsidizing the pre-65 claims so that the plan for the past two and a half years has a net loss ratio in total of 105%. So the plan is historically 5.4% underfunded. Any questions so far?
Pardon me, Meg, I didn't hear anything.
Councilmember Simon, ask any questions?
Oh, sure. Councilmember can proceed.
The contract language that we have in our CBAs.
Can you ask that again?
The, the proposed plans that were, that we saw on the last slide, I believe it was, I'm, I'm curious about the contract language in the CBAs. Is this going to be a problem for our city?
Can I answer that?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you repeat it because I couldn't hear it real clearly?
I'll try to summarize it. His question was, do the previous proposed scenarios, are they in line with our CBAs? So the answer to that is, we have one CBA that has specific language about health insurance premiums and premium differentials. So we would just have to work with that particular bargaining unit on how to navigate through that. The other, the other bargaining units don't have any language about this.
And just for everybody in the audience, CBA stands for?
Collected Bargaining Agreement.
Thank you.
Contract.
Is there any more?
He asked if it's a conversation that will have to be had with that particular contract group.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is it a conversation you'll have to have with that particular contract group?
Yes, that's, that's what I stated. We'll have to have a, a conversation with that particular bargaining unit.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
So before you leave that last screen, so what you're saying here is for, I don't know, some period of time, and I don't know what the period of time is, but for every dollar that we've been putting in, we've been spending $105.04.
Correct.
Right, or every hundred dollars maybe?
Correct. So this is since January 1st of 2020, and that, that's because as of January 1st of 2020, the post-65 retirees were no longer on the Staywell Plan. They were on the fully insured plan. So the city stopped paying for the claims through this plan.
So we've been, so we've been regularly underfunding our, the plan in order to keep it healthy, and so we've been using out-of-reserves, apparently.
Yeah, ba, based on, based, again, based on the, the projected funding, based on enrollment and claims, yes, the plan's been underfunded.
Okay.
And that's, again, past roughly two and a half years.
Thank you. Go ahead, proceed, thank you.
So these are the plan designs for what we'd like to call the copay plan, the Staywell Plan, Local Plus, and then the base plan. Again, the plan designs mirror Staywell recommendation. We're fans of those. Projected funding and cost share, again, current, we've gone over the 2023 projection as is. We've gone over at the 23.1 million or the 20.6% increase. This projection with these changes is $21.7 million or, I believe, roughly 12.6% increase. And this includes plan design changes to OAP-1, the new plan offering, the assumption of 10% migration of active employees to the new plan, and then the defined contributions as mentioned previously, based on actives, defined contribution based on 82-18 for OAP-2, and pre-65s based on 80-20 for OAP-2. These are the contributions as calculated. Lot of numbers here, but this is the contribution comparison, the monthly contribution between the current, current cost for employees, the 2023 cost for, under the Staywell projection, and the 2023 recommendation as described above. We think this, this scenario represents plan choice that'll help employees choose plans that help overall manage the plan costs. It's funded appropriately based on actuarial calculations, and it's fair contributions that help the city budget on an ongoing basis, and sets up the plan overall for long-term success and less need to have these conversations on an annual basis. Any additional questions?
Proceed.
So the, so the plans here, that's a, a total of, of the pharmacy recommendations and everything, that's the whole plan, correct?
This does not represent the inclusion of the pharmacy.
Does not, okay.
And that was because, having done this before, I knew the Cigna was going to come back and want to negotiate on the contract. I didn't want to have to keep re, having our folks redo the projection over and over again. So this is net of the pharmacy. If, if we get to $350,000, it reduces this $21.7 million.
Which slide is that? What number is that?
This, this is slide 32. And again, all these projections are with claims as of May of 2022. As we accumulate more and more months of claims and enrollment, we will update the projections so that overall numbers can change.
Can you say again what you just said? I, I'm not sure I heard you. Relative to what happens to that $21.700 if, on the pharmacy side of it? I, I don't think I caught that.
Sure, the $21.7, if the, if we stand at $350,000 projected savings from the move to CBS, the 21.7 reduces based on that projected savings.
Okay, okay.
When you received the recommendation from the Staywell Committee, and they wanted to go to CBS, did they have any, you stated that you knew that you thought, I'm sorry, the other company would come back with a counteroffer. Did you notify them that, that you thought that would happen?
Um, I don't recall if we had that conversation.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else, other questions?
I, I have several.
Okay, fire away.
Sorry, sorry about that, but, so, I think, let me ask this question first. Is it common for plans such as this to have essentially one structure for active employees and one structure for, you know, other, you know, for one, you know, a structure for one group and a structure for another group? I guess I'm just trying to understand whether that is common or this would be unusual or...
It would, it would not be unusual. Some groups do it, some groups do not. It depends on the size of the retiree population or the group that you're looking to carve out. Currently, we have about 270 or 280 retirees on the plan. That's about at the point when the group could be rated on its own. We could have a separate rating for actives and a separate rating for pre-65s.
Okay.
The situation that you get into, though, is that as large claims pop up in the smaller group, it impacts that group more significantly than the group as a whole. So by bundling the entire population together of 1,100 people, it, it allows the, those large claims to be dispersed among a larger group population and mitigate some of those increases.
Okay, all right.
He's got another one, go ahead.
So is it fair to, so, you know, we, maybe let me ask a, or make a comment first, you know, in our, in the ordinance we passed, or the resolution we passed, we asked the, the Staywell Committee to make some recommendations, and then if they, and then we asked city manager to make recommendations. Yeah, my observation is, is it appears that the, the Staywell Committee really... So, is it fair to, so, you know, we, maybe let me ask a, or make a comment first. You know, in our, in the ordinance we pa, or the resolution we passed, we asked the, the Staywell Committee to make some recommendations, and then if they, and then we asked city manager to make recommendations. Yeah, my observation is, is it appears that the Staywell Committee really didn't address that level of concern that we had relative to the long-term piece of the, of the, long-term fix for the plan. It was, and in fact, according to your calculations, we actually, even with their, their recommendation, we're going to underfund the plan by almost $900,000.
Correct.
So, so that, to me, isn't, isn't a fix in any way, shape, or form. On the, the percentages of, or the, on the, the deductibles that are, that you identified, a number of different scenarios on the deductibles. I guess I, my question is, are our deductibles on these plans in line with what you see with other companies or, and other organizations? Or are our deductibles lower or higher, or what? What would you say?
I would say that the deductible on OAP 1 is, is within benchmark. The deductibles for OAP 2 and Local Plus are, are also within benchmark.
Okay, so you're saying there, that's not-
There's, there's, there's a range, it's not an exact number. That's, this, this is, this is the plan, but there's kind of a range of what we see.
The reason I ask that question is because in terms of comparable to other plans I've been in, and I've been in several in the last few years, these seem to be very low to me. But, that's why I asked the question, I didn't, I wanted to-
I, I think, a lot of it also depends on claims experience of the plan, because increasing deductible and out of pocket is, is a, a good way to help mitigate plan exposure and increase plan costs year over year. So, I think based on the experience that the plans have had, the deductibles are probably richer than, for, for all the plans are probably richer than, than plan experience would dictate.
Okay. So, under the defined contribution scenario that you've outlined, how is that rating structured relative to the, you know, the rate for a single employee, for employee plus spouse, employee plus family? You know, how, how is that typically differentiated? Is that, is there a general formula, or is that generally done in a certain way, or?
There's not a specific formula that we use that gets to two different ratings per tier. It's, it's often getting to a budgetary number when, when calculating a defined contribution. I would say that the current contribution share of each tier being the same percentage, that's something that we really don't see. Typically, the tiers that have more members on them pay a higher percentage of the total premium. So, people who have employee spouse would pay higher than people who have singles. And that's why when we look at 2024, in the second year of the defined contribution, we increase the non-single tiers by 5% for both actives and pre-65s. Something we've talked about with, with the committee a number of times.
Okay, that's helpful. On the, the perspective of funding cost share scenario that you, that you outlined, and the overall cost to the plans, does that include the funding of the OAP 2 and Local Plus HSAs?
This, this does not. This is premium only, this does not account for the HSA dollars.
So, that's substantially, that's going to be substantial additional dollars that would come out of this.
Correct. When we're doing our projections, though, we, unless there's a specific migration called for, we use enrollment as is. So, if, if we were to calculate HSA dollars based on these numbers, we look at enrollment as of June of 2022, and then project that for this year, and then project that for next year, we wouldn't add any people in based on projected migration. In fact, the migration strategy we, we used had people migrating out of OAP 2 and Local Plus 2, the, the base plan, which has no HSA contribution. So, we could be losing some people who are currently receiving an HSA contribution. They would, in theory, have an HSA balance built, or would have contributed themselves, and might feel comfortable moving to the $3,500 deductible plan with that HSA balance.
Okay, so this would be a question for the city manager at some point, maybe not tonight. And I realize you might have to research this, but I'd be interested to know what the HSA funding for the, those two plans, you know, costs us a year. Maybe you know that, maybe you don't, but.
We'd be happy to make sure we have accurate, well-defined numbers. So, if we could have just a day, we'll get that pulled together.
All right, thank you. So, the last, last comment or observation I would have, or question maybe I should have, is, is that, is what you're telling us essentially, I'm, I'm trying to boil things down a little bit here, but is essentially what you're telling us that without some structural changes or, or, and some significant funding changes for this plan, that it's going to be in serious jeopardy in really short order?
Correct.
Would that be accurate?
Yes, yes. When we look at a self-funded plan that has a projected increase of 20%, we know that plan needs some serious change. And whether it's plan design change, adding, adding a new plan, eliminating a plan, we want to evaluate all the strategies to help get to a mitigated increase. It's not often a group tells us, okay, we'll absorb a 20% increase. That typically doesn't happen. Typically, the groups, most groups want to have a lower increase than 20%. So, we want to do what's right so that the plan gets appropriately funded for 2023 and set up to be appropriately funded ongoing, '24, '25, et cetera, et cetera, so that the increases are not high double digits every year, that we can look at, you know, hopefully have lower increases, we can look at, you know, passing on better contribution changes to employees, not have to look like we're charging more for less.
And that's, that, and that kind of summary comes out of all of the actuary calculations and the, the projections that you do, knowing what you do, and you do this for lots and lots of companies around the United States.
Correct.
This isn't a one-off kind of a thing, so.
Correct.
All right, I think that's my question, Mayor.
Anyone else, questions? Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So, to get back to the HSAs a little bit, because I'm looking at slide six there. The objection, objective, let me say that. The objective is to shift over from OAP 1 to OAP 2. So, if, if we, since the, the healthcare plan starts January 1, as people are beginning to move over there with that contribution, single or family contribution, and the way that the, we pay our bills is usually about a month behind, could that converge to a perfect storm with, with funding being taken from the Staywell fund to put in these HSAs as we're paying December's bills in January? Could that have some kind of financial impact that's not good? If that makes sense.
I mean, certainly if there's an increase in enrollment in one of the high-deductible plans that has an HSA contribution, that would need to be accounted for whenever the accounts are funded. Further, there are a number of ways to look at funding HSA accounts. We have groups that fund HSA accounts twice a year, four times a year, and communicate to employees, instead of plugging the entire amount in on January 1, we're going to put January 1, April 1, July, October, or January and July, something like that, to help smooth out that spend to the, the employer.
Is that something that's done frequently in the industry?
Yeah, we have a number of groups that do it.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that's it for me.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart, any questions? Councilmember Steinmeier, any questions?
Yes, just one more question. I, I'm curious, did the Staywell Committee get a chance to see the 2023 Cigna renewal for the pharmacy side? Were they able to review that?
The, the final numbers, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that, those numbers came through on Friday when we were developing this presentation. We made some last-minute changes to it when that new information came to light. So, no, I mean, that, that's a, a new number that just, just came to us on Friday.
Okay, so, should we perhaps let them have a chance to review that at some time very soon?
Adam, I'll, I'll take that one. Councilmember Steinmeier, obviously, you know, it's, it's extremely important to me that this data be vetted by all the stakeholders as thoroughly as possible. The challenge we need to be cognizant of is open enrollment. Any of these plan design changes need to be made in the relatively near future so we avoid the debacle of last year and all the hangups with open enrollment.
Okay, understood.
Okay. Anyone else? Proceed.
One more. So, as I've gone through my notes, and we need a better vision plan, I think, here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan Hobart, sorry. I had a question for the Cigna rep, or maybe Mr. Walker. Does the city need to be in the self-insurance business? Is there a way for us to provide the same quality of healthcare for our employees without being self-insured? Has anybody looked at that?
That's, I, I, I'm happy, councilmember, to speak to it, you know, at the very amateur level. I, I think Jonathan could get into better detail, but very, you know, plain-spoken, the early data on that would seem to indicate that a, a self-funded plan allows the city to control these costs better than if we just went commercial. In that instance, we're going to have little to no say over those annual increases in plan design changes, whereas right now, we're able to, you know, as you can see from the presentation night, the recommendation, this is more of a tiered, multi-year glide path to a, a different operating model. On the private market, those changes are going to happen when and how the insurance company dictates those.
Yeah, but I appreciate that, Mr. Walker, but all we've done now is bleed ourselves dry. So, what's the difference?
Well, the slide I showed with the two-year, two-and-a-half-year loss ratio for the plan of 105%. If the plan was, was fully insured and the carrier was collecting premium on a monthly basis, they would not have let the claims go this, this long. The, they would have stopped the plan much sooner. Having a, a self-funded plan allows the, the, the plan to, as, as city manager said, to make plan design changes, to control many more facets, facets of the plan than having, having a fully insured plan. With a fully insured plan, you're completely, completely up to what the market dictates, what the market calls for in a, in a renewal, and that, that is your increase. There's no, there's not a negotiation around it.
One more, thank you, gentlemen, one more comment. Mr. Mayor, I would, I would probably ask the city manager for a resolution or for a, a non-ordinance action item that we appoint a member or members of the city council to the Staywell Committee. This is, this is beyond troubling. This is, this is, this is true disaster territory, and I don't want to see our employees or retirees, any, anyone, go without the insurance they've been promised. Something has not worked well either. We haven't kept up with the rate of the increase in health, health insurance costs, or some other factor has affected our ability to, to manage the plan. I know Councilmember Fierce knows a lot more about this than I do, but, and I wouldn't mind seeing him serve, serve on the Staywell Committee, but, but at the appropriate time, I would, I would probably make that proposal. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it. Thank you for recognizing me.
You're welcome. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. To Councilmember Hobart, I, I certainly understood that you'd like to have a, a resolution or a non-ordinance action item, appointing members of the council to that committee. I, I would strongly recommend, in, you know, in my role to help keep the council in, in the right lane per the charter, that if you're going to do that, you probably need to modify the scope and purpose of that committee, because as it stands right now, the resolution states that that committee is advisory to the city manager, and it seems troubling or problematic to have the council advising the city manager when it's really my job to advise you and then take direction from you about how you wish to go. So, I certainly understand the intent. I don't mean to be argumentative, I just want to provide the guidance to help keep the council in the right place.
I, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Walker, that makes sense.
Any other comments, Councilmember Hobart?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? I just want to ask a simple question, is what's the typical size for a self-insured plan? And we're roughly, what?
With 1,100 people on the plan.
Right.
It's very rare that we see a fully insured plan this size, at least the groups that I work with. Self-funding for a group this size, self-funding affords a lot of flexibility and a lot of customization to the plan that large groups typically require.
So, what's your typical size of a self-insured plan?
Once, once groups get to about the 400 to 500 range, they start giving it more consideration. And as they get larger between 500 and 1,000, it's more and more consideration, and 1,000 is really the tipping point where, where it's, almost all the time, we see a self-funded plan of that size.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. With, with your question spurred this one, so using me as an example, the company that I work for, we're also self-insured, but we have no options. It is, here it is, with, you know, spouse, family, plus one, all of that. Outside of that, that's it. So, in, I'm assuming that we are as compatible or, or as good as some of the other big companies that are out there as well, but I can't really compare. Using the, the city and my company, the city's a little bit better. They put a complete one package together. Is that something that could be looked at here, or is that something that would not work well?
I guess I'm, I'm having trouble, when, when you say you have one option, does that, does that one plan?
One plan.
One, one plan?
One plan only.
There, there are companies that do that. One of the things we found through a lot of our research as, as a consulting firm is that groups with a varied demographic population, so different age groups, one plan typically does not fit all people in all stages of their life. So, providing employees more choice in their benefit program typically results in happier employees, and employees who are more willing to stay on longer term with an employer because they can choose from a selection of benefit plans that works best for them. And that's not just medical, I mean, I don't get too far away, but medical, dental, vision, life and disability, and then the voluntary benefits. The more choice employees have, typically the happier they are because they can choose what works for them. what works for them.
Any further questions? Any comments to wrap up? There's a gentleman in the audience that's wanted to ask a question, and can I get you after the session? We, we typically don't open it for general discussion. I apologize, but I will speak to you personally, my friend, right after the session, if that's okay.
I'd just like to make a formal request to allow our president and representatives to over 150 retirees in the room to address the council. I respect them, your coach.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we make a concession?
Yes.
Can we let him speak? I would like to.
Okay. The question is, are we going to make that a policy going forward? Is that for everyone in every situation? I mean, that's my question. I mean, if we're going to do this, you know, forever, for now, forever hold our peace? Because we're going to make that, you know, we're going to make that a town hall meeting at that point, and that's a whole different discussion, so...
Typically, wouldn't we just provide an opportunity for the, you know, those that are interested to make comments at a, a regular council meeting, sign up and make regular comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I will defer to the wish of the council.
I would suggest that we, we will meet with, with Bob afterwards and discuss some of those points that we have, that you might have, and then also be able to speak before the council at the, the regular session.
Because, you know, Bob, you and I have time already scheduled this evening to talk. You and I talked last night.
I just, it bothered me that the question's not being asked, of how did we get here? Why are we here now? And I have those answers, and nobody wants to hear. It's sad.
Bob, you and I talked last night, did we talk, talk last night? And did you bring that, hold on, did you bring that issue up to me last night?
Sure.
In my rec- in my recollection, I announced, unless I'm wrong, and I could be wrong. I didn't remember you bringing that issue up when we were talking last night.
The issue of...
The, what you, the statement you just said right now, that what brought us here and how did we get here?
I, I brought the issue that this was a study session, discussed a while. I sure did have some knowledge and input that I'd like to have in this discussion.
Okay. Would you like to meet, and I told you, when we met, when we talked last night, I said I'd be happy to meet with you as long as you like.
I don't have a problem with that, but I do know what you just said, Councilman Stewart. I understand where you're coming from, and I'm not arguing that point.
Right.
When I was at a study session very recently, when somebody was asked, sitting in the audience, to come up and address this group in regards to questions that they had on that, on this subject, had a study session. It has been done before, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, and I'm not telling you how you should hear this by means, but I know it has been done before. This is not a first request.
Right. Bob, I would just say, I'm not opposed to you getting up and talking, but when we talked last night, you just asked me that question. I mean, we were on the phone, I didn't cut you off, I'd have been happy to talk as long as you liked. If you would have asked me specifically at that point, I want to, I want to talk, I would have had the discussion. We didn't have the discussion.
Right, no, we did not have the discussion.
And so, you know, all I want to say, heads up, my friend.
I understand.
You know, and that's it. I mean, but I, but I said, we'll be happy to talk as long as you like tonight. Is that right? And we can come up, we can go to McDonald's, we can stay here in the room, we can have a discussion with everyone, I'll be happy to do that in an open forum at that point and have that discussion.
That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further? Uh, let's take about a seven-minute recess, I have 7:14, let's come back, uh, what's that, 7:22, 7:23? And then we'll come to the IPL issue at that point. I think that's a more pressing issue. Okay? Thank you all.
All right, let's proceed. And the next issue on the agenda was the IPL. Discussion. Mr. City Manager, you want to frame that at all?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the council is keenly aware, a few months ago, there was much discussion after quite a few years' worth of work about new generation technologies for independence, power, and light. There continues to be evolution in the market that's impacting and affecting this, so we thought it was timely to get Mr. Nail back in front of the council, update you on some of those market dynamics, and make sure you're up to speed on all of that. So with that, I will ask Mr. Nail to begin his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jim Nail, IPL Director. As noted on the title page there, tonight is for IPL capacity update. In order to frame that for you, first wanted to just, we get a lot of questions about what is SPP? How does the Southwest Power Pool work? So in a nutshell, the Southwest Power Pool functions like an air traffic controller. It doesn't own the assets, but it directs traffic across the region. That's how it manages our electric grid. All participating generation, and on this slide here, that would include hydro, nuclear, coal and gas, turbines, wind turbines, solar power, all the energy assets that are participating in the market, all of those are funneled to Southwest Power Pool. Southwest Power Pool reviews the projected demand across the region, and then they schedule sufficient resources to make sure that they're able to meet that demand. They also monitor conditions across the grid in real time, and then bring on additional assets or switch assets around as necessary in order to maintain the stability of the grid. Now, that can include a number of things. That's the amount of energy that's being required, as well as things like congestion. Transmission lines are like pipelines. They can only hold so much. So if you're trying to push too much power through from one direction, you have to have some alternate transmission lines or alternate generation sources in order to balance that flow. SPP provides that control. All participating transmission in the area is also controlled by Southwest Power Pool, so they'll take the power that's being generated, and then they use our transmission assets in order to shift that power around and get it to the end users. Participating utilities, then, in return, they purchase all of their power, all their daily energy, from Southwest Power Pool's combined resources. Now, Southwest Power Pool doesn't profit from this process. They are nonprofit. They're regulating the whole industry there across the region. They charge utilities for the energy they consume and for the transmission access necessary to get that power to them, and then in return, Southwest Power Pool reimburses those facilities that have provided that generation and have provided those transmission assets. In return, as a member of that pool, we enjoy the lowest average cost that is available to us for the energy that we provide, as well as being reimbursed for the use of our transmission resources in the process. Part of our obligation for receiving that energy is that we commit to providing resources to Southwest Power Pool, and Southwest Power Pool currently has a requirement that members provide 112% of their peak load during the summer season. Now, this has definitely provided a benefit to Independence. Prior to the market being created, our average cost for power, when we had to go out on the market ourselves and obtain contracts hourly, daily, weekly, whatever contracts would best fit our particular need at the moment, our average cost was running around $75 per megawatt hour, and as high as 84 in 2008. After the Southwest Power Pool created this market, we saw our costs drop significantly. In 2015, our average purchase cost was $22.41. 2018, it was 27, and 2020, it was $20.74. So significant savings over us trying to go out and market this energy on our own. Now, as I said, the reserve obligation is 112%. That provides Southwest Power Pool with sufficient resources that in cases where somebody's unexpectedly offline, because a boiler may have a tube leak, or a wind turbine nacelle catches fire, whatever might take some generation offline, they've got those additional resources that they can call on. Resource adequacy is the term that we use there. Southwest Power Pool reaches out across the region. They work with all the different utilities that are in there, and they coordinate scheduled outages. They'll look at what the demand is projected to be, how much energy's going to be needed, how many units are already offline, and if we want to take one of ours off, we have to submit a request to Southwest Power Pool. They will evaluate whether they can support that outage based on all the other outages combined. So they're mandated under NERC's rules, the North American Electric Reliability Corporation. NERC mandates that they maintain that stability, so SPP has a responsibility to oversee that. Shortfalls have been experienced in some extreme conditions. Your resource adequacy, you're planning your best guess based on history. You're looking at how units across the region have performed, who's able to deliver, who isn't, what unexpected things might happen, like the February storm that we had in '21. Prior to that, there was one summer where wind has a cyclic nature anyway, and they were projecting that it was going to drop off. Only it dropped off about two hours earlier than they expected, and across the entire Midwest, they were scrambling to try to get generation on fast enough to maintain that demand. So Southwest Power Pool has to balance all of that when they do their planning and consider who they can allow to be off and how much they need to schedule for the next day. February, if anything, February '21 showed us that that planning isn't perfect, and there are cases where the best plan you had, the plan that's worked the last 10 years, this time it didn't. Now, with more and more fossil plants coming offline, they're starting to project more problems during extreme conditions in the months and years ahead. MISO, the regulating group to our east, MISO, all of a sudden discovered, when they redid their planning, they're expecting to be short in certain peak conditions, both this year and next year. They simply won't have the generation available to meet the projected demand. So what do you do? How do you correct that? A lot of it has to do with the planning process and what you allow to be on or off, but that's still only, each member only has a finite amount of resources. So what Southwest Power Pool has proposed are two things. One, increase that obligation from 112% to 115%. That way, all of us together, collectively, we provide just that incremental increase in capacity and be able to cover in case somebody goes offline unexpectedly. The second thing they're considering is a penalty for performance. One of the things that happened in February of '21 was a lot of units that were scheduled, they were on standby. When it came time to start, nothing happened. Either they froze up, or they took them out of the queue, even though they had said they were available the day before, either because of the gas prices or freezing issues, but a lot of units that were supposed to be available weren't. Across the industry, there are units that have a higher outage percentage than others, either because that particular company hasn't maintained them as well, or other issues that have caused outage problems, but some units perform much better than others. Southwest Power Pool is proposing those underperforming units that really aren't as available as they claim, assess a penalty to their capacity, and give them less credit. Both of those could impact Independence. Some of it, we just have to wait and see what the actual rules are.
As we go here, discuss that. So with this consideration of penalty, how does that translate into a monetary penalty for us, since we have some older CTs and slow starts?
Well, this particular penalty isn't dollars. It's megawatts. One of our CTs is typically, let's say, 17 megawatts. If we have an outage history where every time you turn around, it's breaking down, and it's really only available half the time, they may only give us 10 megawatts credit instead of 17. So it reduces how much capacity that we can claim. So that's the penalty in this case. Now, the increase to 115%, Southwest Power Pool staff recommended an immediate increase for 2023 to 115%. The member committee and the members, we all pushed back on that and asked for an incremental increase, 1% a year over the next three years.
Don't we already have a penalty placed on us if we're not able to perform?
There is a monetary penalty, and I'll get to that here in a bit. Southwest Power Pool staff petitioned to the Board of Directors to go for, even the members asked for a one-year increments, the staff recommended to the Board of Directors the immediate increase to 115. That's what the Board of Directors voted for. That still has to be reported to FERC, the federal agency, and members will have an opportunity to comment on that, but there's a good chance that that 3% increase is what is going to be approved ultimately. For us, an increase of from 112% to 115% is about eight to nine megawatts that we have to account for in our capacity portfolio. Now, the penalty that I'm talking about, that one, we don't know exactly how that's going to work out yet. There's a number of things that are being discussed. For instance, our H5 unit, we had a generator fault. That fault takes a long time to fix. Plus, we had supply chain issues that delayed it even further. But when it's returned to service, it should be good for the full amount. Now, compare that to a unit that about once or twice a month, it breaks down, whether it's an oil pump, or a compressor, or some other, it just continually has issues. Is that unit really available as much as you claim? You go through a major repair and fix, we think we ought to get credit for that. Something that's continually breaking down, I can see their point. So we're waiting to see exactly how that would transpire. That discussion is probably going to take a couple of years for SPP to work that out, so that piece of it, we can start looking at how it might impact us, but we don't really know until we get more details from Southwest Power Pool.
Jim, just a question. How much of our production that we have, would you put in those two different camps? How much would be reliable, or how much of it would be problematic?
Both of our gas units, H5 and H6, they have historically been very dependable. The one that is probably the biggest issue for us, our J2 unit, has more of a history of frequent breakdowns or failures to start than the others. So that one might be one that would be involved in that. One of the proposals that SPP is looking at is to do like a three-year average, so that might help ease some of those constraints.
If I could, Mr. Nail, just interrupt there. Could you give us a report on the various production units and send that to the city manager, just so we can have an idea of your... Well, I don't want to put us under a contractual obligation here if you put this in writing to the city manager, and SPP holds us to it, but I would like to know, what's our capacity? What's our risk? You know, it's like an athlete, you know, is this athlete ready this game, or is it not? And it's that kind of a thing.
Kind of a risk assessment for...
Yeah, for the various production tools that we have at our disposal.
Certainly, we can certainly do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is our portfolio, as we currently have it. You see, the highest amount that we have is within our own fleet here in the city, approximately 93.5 megawatts that those six units are rated for. Our participation in Dogwood is 80, and you can see the list there. I will note that Oneta's capacity, that 45 megawatts, we do have an option on an additional 25, and we could add 5, 10, 15, but once we add it, it's for the rest of the contract. But that is an option that we currently have available to us for an additional 25 megawatts. The solar farms are listed there. They are not monitored by Southwest Power Pool. They're not listed as a generation asset with Southwest Power Pool, but it would be equivalent to if you had rooftop solar on your house. Whatever that generates reduces how much you have to take from IPL. Our solar farms function the same way for us. Whatever they generate is that much less that we have to purchase from Southwest Power Pool on an hour-to-hour basis. And during these bright sunny days, they've been doing well. We've had hours that they were doing 10, 10.5 megawatts during an hour, and they're rated for 11, so that's not bad. But in general, across a year, about 2.9 megawatts is what we can count on across the board to reduce our load. So altogether, that gives us a capacity of 339.8 megawatts. Currently, our obligation, that 112%, is about 333. So we have a little bit of cushion right now. That capacity obligation, we actually, we take a look at that every year. Every year, we have to report back to Southwest Power Pool what our new projected peak load is, and we do that based on a historical look back. If we had one cold year, we wouldn't automatically say, oh, we can lower it to 250. That wouldn't be prudent. So we look at what our history is. Right now, this summer, my dip, 265? 267. Right this year, so far, the highest we've hit is 267. Now, our historic all-time peak is 315. So either folks have gotten a lot more conservative in where they set their thermostat, or combination of rooftop solar going in, people taking advantage of the programs we've got to improve the efficiency of their homes, their appliances, all of that together, we're actually seeing lower. So next year, when we propose our peak, we could possibly get a little more margin on there as well.
So just to clarify, so like when people do put solar on their houses, we don't get any benefit for that. The only benefit we get is when the next time that is calculated for the capacity obligation is calculated?
Well, by benefit, if you mean reducing our peak load, the next year, I think it's February is when we have to report to Southwest Power Pool on what our projected peak is for the following summer.
So we don't get any credit for, like, the solar farms give us credit. We don't get credit for houses that have solar?
The only credit would be anything they're producing is that much less that we have to provide.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. So are there other things like the solar farms or things that we could do that would decrease our demand so that we don't have as much obligation?
There are some things that can be done with what they call demand-side management, where you encourage people to shift their load to a different time of day. Our peak load is typically late in the afternoon, when you've had all day long to heat up, people have their air conditioners on, and when they get home from work, all the appliances and air conditioning gets cranked up further, and so you see a surge. If you can encourage people to shift their usage to other parts of the day, that lowers our peak. Spread it out across the day instead of having a big peak. One of the problems we have is we currently have no way to measure that. I don't have any way to tell that you shifted your load from 2:00 in the afternoon to 2:00 at night. In order to get that kind of data, we would have to have AMI meters to be able to collect that data on an hour-to-hour basis and be able to give you credit for helping us with that load shifting.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this graph kind of shows you what we're projecting ahead. It's a little bit off because we've assumed, and this started two years ago when we started these discussions, the plan was how do we retire the CTs? And so the CTs drop off in the first couple of years there, so you can really keep that 93 on as long as we want to maintain those units. But some of the things that do drop off here pretty soon, in the big scheme of things, the Smoky Hills contract expires in 2029, the Marshall Wind in 2036, our Oneta contract expires in 2030. So when you start dropping those off of our, you can see that very quickly, we fall below, the margin that we currently have, we end up falling below that, and when you add the, when you increase that requirement to 115% and put that extra eight or nine obligation, when we look at the development at North Point, which if we assume a conservative 1% a year across that development, that's another two to three megawatts per year that'll be added to our load, we eat up this margin fairly quickly. So we end up in a position where we have to continue the discussion of what do we do to provide for the capacity that we're obligated in order to be SPP members. We do have options. There's multiple ways that you can provide that capacity. You can have capacity contracts like we have with Oneta, where we pay just to have that capacity accredited to us. You can have power purchase agreements. That's similar to what we have with Iotan and the Nebraska City plants, the wind farms, where we are purchasing both energy Nebraska City plants, the wind farms, where we are purchasing both energy and capacity from them. You can have ownership, like we do with Dogwood, or internal generation of our own. All of those are ways that you can meet that capacity obligation. All of them have their own merits, their own pluses and minuses, and what we will be bringing to you in the months ahead is our best recommendation for how we can meet those needs. We wanted to bring this to you now to, to give you an update on, on what's changing in Southwest Power Pool. As long as we do maintain our CTs, and we've got that extra that we can claim from Oneta, it gives us some time. But recognize, adding, adding assets to Southwest Power Pool takes Southwest Power Pool's permission. They have to analyze it, they have to study it, do the transmission analysis, make sure that it fits into the overall plan, and right now, that process takes four, can take four years or more. So, you have to, you have to, we have to forecast ahead enough that we can see when we're going to have the need, what we're going to, how much we're going to need to add, and then make a proposal that will get us to that point before we end up in trouble. You did mention the penalty, the financial penalty. Right now, the penalty that, the penalty that Southwest Power Pool assesses is based on the cost of new generation. Essentially, the, the, the assumption is, you fall short because you're deciding not to pursue additional generation or additional capacity. So, they base, they base the penalty on what it would have cost you to add. Right now, seventeen megawatts, which is equivalent to one of our CTs, if we've, if we fell short by seventeen megawatts, that would be an annual penalty from SPP of two-point-nine-one million dollars. So, Southwest Power Pool is serious about members meeting their obligation, and if you, if you were to make the decision that we're just gonna, we're just gonna fall short and, and eat the penalty, one CT is two-point-nine million dollars' worth of annual penalty for failing to meet your obligation.
Mr. Nail?
Yes, sir.
For this new council, we've had, we've had discussions about the Oneta contracts. Can you, can you please give the, the new council the description of what the Oneta contract actually provides for the city, and the cost that we've had, and have we ever called upon it? Have we ever needed it?
The Oneta contract provides us only capacity. It, it does not provide us energy. We, we, when we looked at that proposal a couple of years, or several years ago, the decision was made not to produce, not to pursue additional energy, but only to per, take advantage of the capacity that they offered. So, in, in that respect, Councilman, we've never had to take advantage of it because we can't. We don't, we don't have a right to the energy. We only have the capacity accredited to SPP, so that SPP can include it in their overall mix on our behalf. Oneta is a, Oneta is a power station down in Oklahoma that has gas turbine units, peakers, and they had more capacity than they needed for their immediate needs, so they put it on the market. We took advantage of that and purchased it significantly less than you can buy energy and capacity like we have at, at the, either the wind farms, or at Nebraska City or Iotan. So, it was a cheaper alternative, but it does not give us any energy. It's only, it's basically at the bottom of us, at the bottom of a balance sheet, SPP says, here's, here's forty-five megawatts that we will credit to independents for their obligation. And again, we do have an option on an additional twenty-five that they, that they would sell to us if we, if we call that option.
So, where are they, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but so, so where, I mean, it sounds to me like they're just paper, paper capacity.
Yes.
So, but, you know, what do we do, what do we do if we need the capacity? I mean, and, and again, please, please let us know, how much do we pay for, for these contracts as well?
The, the capacity, we have contracted with Oneta to credit that capacity to SPP, that's ours. They can't sell it to somebody else. We have contractual rights to that capacity, so it is ours. We have access to it right now. We don't have to call on it because we're not drawing energy from it, it's simply going into the balance sheet with, with Southwest Power Pool. I don't have the cost right here at my finger, but we, we can get that to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate if you could get the, the cost of the contracts to all the council members.
I'm being told one-point-two million dollars a year is what we spend on that forty.
They will, Southwest Power Pool will allow you in the way of capacity versus capacity plus energy? I mean?
Really, it's, it's a question of deliverable, firm delivery, what they consider firm delivery and non-firm delivery. If they have done a study, and they have shown through their engineering study that, yes, that energy could get from the source to independents, they count that as firm capacity. If, if we just go out, if we find a, if we find a, a solar farm out in Arizona, and we want to purchase capacity from them on our behalf, if we don't prove it as deliverable, then Southwest Power Pool does put a limit on what percentage of your portfolio can include that. I don't have that number. Paul, do you know what that is off the top of your head?
It all has to be deliverable to the Southwest.
To the Southwest Power Pool, but it doesn't have to be deliverable to us, but it does have to be deliverable to the Southwest Power Pool, but it's like twenty-five percent of your portfolio can be.
I don't think there's currently a limit for capacity, but they have talked about that.
So, if there's a, if capacity is so much cheaper than capacity plus energy, why doesn't a utility just go out and buy all the capacity and not, not have just energy, you know, not just have just that instead of capacity plus energy?
Good question, Councilman, and there are, there are especially small municipals that have done that, co-ops that have done that. The downside is, you're not getting any energy. So, that means you're purchasing all of your, you're purchasing all of your other energy off the market, and if the market rates skyrocket on you, then you could be in, in trouble. And especially in Texas, where they're unregulated, there've been a number of co-ops and municipals that went bankrupt, going just the capacity option.
Okay, thank you.
The studies that have been done by Southwest Power Pool, some of the other regional agencies, FERC, and other, some other organizations, especially after the February twenty-one, one of the things they, that they determined is, your best bet to survive those kind of crises is a balanced portfolio, a mixed portfolio. So, you have a little bit of capacity, a little bit of owned, a little bit of, of co-op. That balanced portfolio, excuse me, is your best protection. Subject to your questions, that's our update.
Proceed. Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, you were talking about generation and, and what that looks like if we were to hypothetically do new generation and all the studies and analysis that takes place to, to get us into the, get the blessing from the SPP. Is there a window of time that, that we're in now that if we were to do new generation, or look at it like that, that the, the depth of study that we would have to produce and the analysis that would be needed to get into the, to the grid would be less than?
Yes, sir, there is. Uh, Southwest Power Pool does have what they refer to as a replacement pipeline, where if you are proposing to replace existing generation that's currently in use, that, then you, you don't go into the, the mass study that's, that's backlog five, four or five years. You get your own look, and right now, they're estimating that would be possibly twelve to eighteen months. But you, again, you have to be replacing existing generation that's currently in use, and what you're, what you are replacing it with can be no more than that approved level at the same location. So, we would have to look at, say, replacing, replacing the generation at Substation J, right here across from Sermon Center, replacing generation at that location, limited to that same amount that's there. We could do less, but you couldn't do more. Under those, under those stipulations, you can, you can request a review under the replacement pipeline.
Is that good for any time?
As long as it's, right now, that is a, that is an ongoing program that they have. So, again, if we, if we chose to replace something we already have, you know, our older units, again, we've, we've, we've mentioned numerous times, they are old, they are inefficient, there is better equipment available. If we were to make a proposal to replace some of those units at those locations, we could request a, a study under that replacement pipeline.
I know we were looking, kicking that around at, at one point, very recently, of replacing a couple of CTs, and the price tags were, were pretty substantial. We're looking at seventy million dollars for two. I mean, so this is generational, looking into the future of what kind of debt service, how that's going to be paid, what's the cost and the benefit for this. So, anything that we're looking at here is going to be, if we do new generation as, as a direction that we want to go, we're looking at tens of millions of dollars, if, if not close to a hundred million dollars at minimum, to do anything here. So, at some point, our, us as a council is going to have to make the decision of what we are going to do into the future, if we're going to keep status quo, are we going to look at other options, are we going to do capacity, or new generations? I mean, the, the stuff that we're looking at here, comparatively to, to our, our healthcare, some of the folks are here, we're looking at a twenty-million-dollar plan. With our power and light investments, we're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, it's, the stuff that this council looks at is tremendous, and we've got to get as much of the information and good information as we can to make those decisions. So, thank you for your presentation on that.
Anytime.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmeier or Councilmember Holmbar, do you have any questions?
I do, Mayor. Jim, I, I, we've had lots of discussions on this in the last two years. We've, we're slightly closer to making decisions on the future of IPL than, than we were two years ago when I came in, and this is, this should be a top priority. Energy is gold, and if I'm, and if I'm wrong in that assumption, Mr. Nail, just tell me, I mean, would you consider the energy policies of the, the federal government's putting in place aggressively? Is it going to, I, I mean, is it going to shorten our window in reality? I mean, we've got to make some serious decisions here pretty quick. Would you agree with that, or no?
Councilman, it's a, it's a moving target. Certainly, a lot of, a lot of proposals get floated up to Washington, and depending on which agency gets them greatly shapes the outcome of those. What we are seeing across the country is a tremendous increase in the amount of wind and solar projects that are being proposed. We're seeing increasing numbers of the older coal plants being retired, some of them ahead of schedule. Gas plants that, some of the larger gas-powered plants are sitting idle or have been, been delayed. Both FERC, NERC, and I hate using acronyms, but it's a whole lot easier than saying North American, North American Electric Reliability Corporation twenty times. All of those agencies are projecting problems with, or threats to grid stability because of the overreliance, the, the projected overreliance on winds and solar. They are not twenty-four-seven resources, they cannot be twenty-four-seven resources, but we're losing some of the fast-response generation that's necessary to make those possible. The EIA, the Energy Information Agency of the Department of Energy, EIA is projecting that natural gas is going to be a critical piece of that puzzle at least through 2050. Battery technology is coming along, that's going to be, that's going to be significant in the decades ahead, but currently, it's not at a state that it can provide that level of support when a, a cloudy day happens, or the wind dies across the plains, or as we saw this summer with those high-temperature, high-pressure systems where there was no wind for days at a time. They have, we have to have the fast-response units across the, across the whole footprint in order to provide the support necessary to allow that continued development of wind and solar. But it, it is, there's a lot of different pieces that are being, being looked at, there's a lot of different things that, that the government is looking at to help spur the development of those energy storage devices, fast-response units like we have, repowering hydro to provide more energy. They're look, it's a, it's an all-of-the-above solution that, that we're looking for.
And I agree. I, I'm just saying that, that there's, there's a pretty aggressive climate change policies that are, that are, are coming down. I mean, they, they want EVs to be the standard here in the next seven years, and we've, we see that, that the grid across this country is, is probably not going to have the ability to take additional strain, the way that we're, we're moving with energy. So, I'm saying that, you know, complaining that we didn't do anything twenty years ago, when we should have been talking about this, is really, we're coming to that period of time where we're looking at seven years, where we better figure something out, and it's going to take us the time to do so. One of my questions, as I was doing some research, one of my questions to you is, where does CenterPoint lie with, as a, as a energy customer? How, how much energy do they depend on from, from IPL?
Well, I would say all of it. They do have a, they do have a backup generator, but we are their, we are their provider for energy.
Right. Where are they?
Their annual load, I, I don't have that number, but we can get it for you.
Well, they're, they've got to be a, a, a large customer.
They are, they're one of our large customers.
Okay, so, and, and doing the research, with all the technology coming onboard with healthcare, we had a, a healthy healthcare discussion tonight, you know, CenterPoint, hospitals across the country spend about fifty-one percent of their budget on energy, and that's just going up more and more. And as that goes up, so does healthcare cost. The, the decisions that we need to make don't just affect households, but it affects things like what we were talking about, healthcare. And so, we have got to put this discussion into high gear, and we have got to figure out how we're going to handle the demands, the increased demands that are coming our direction, the healthcare issues, residential issues, and I, I'm not preaching you, because I know you, you know those concerns, but I'm hoping that this council will become more aggressive in its discussion, and let's figure out what we need to do. But I still am in the camp that says that energy is the, is the new gold, and that's why you have people like Warren Buffett who's buying up all these, these power companies across the country, they understand it, they know it, and we have an opportunity to do it the right way, and let it be a major revenue generator and help pay for it. So, I'm hoping that this council will take it to heart and will be more aggressive, because our window of opportunity, it is closing, and, and hopefully, we will work on that rather than have more discussions on selling it. I think selling IPL is, 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 it's not, it's not the answer for our city. That's all I have, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Nail.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, proceed.
Mr. Nail, what, what did, where does SPP predict that this three percent's going to come from?
There's a, there's a couple of answers to that. One is, there is, there is still capacity available out there in the market. We, there, we are seeing less of it, because people are, some of those that have capacity are maybe holding on to it because they think they might need it themselves. The capacity that's available is getting more expensive, but that's, that's one of the reasons why the members were asking for the incremental change, so that it would give us more time to develop those resources. Southwest Power Pool, again, the staff, they projected that, that the capacity is available out there, and it's up to you to get it.
Okay. That's all I had, Jim. Thank you very much. I, I sure appreciate your, your presentation tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed, thank you. Mr. City Manager, have you a wrap-up on that or?
No, we'll stay abreast of these issues with the SPP, but as, as Mr. Nell said, time remains of the essence with, with these decisions, particularly with the benefit of large industrial projects like North Point coming that are going to only increase our demand and capacity. We'll, we'll need to make certain we're prepared for that growth and the reciprocal effect on our target numbers for SPP. So we'll keep the council informed of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Not about that.
Okay. You have another question or a comment?
Well, just before we move on to our next item, I have something.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess my, you know, I'm recognizing that we still have a lot of our retirees here, and we still have, you know, there was some concern raised about us hearing from their president. I, you know, I'd be in favor of us suspending the rules if, if there's agreement among the council to hear relatively brief comments from him and even, even relatively brief comments from the Staywell Committee Chairman, who I think is available online, so.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Councilmember Steinmeier, Hobart, have any objections? Hearing none, who would like to go first?
Let Mike Veet go first to you.
Okay. Is he on the? He's watching, but he doesn't have the link. Yeah. Bob, you're live and we'll get him linked up, and if Meg can help him get linked up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I, I'm, feel very awkward now, I'm not wanting to mess up your meeting. I under, my understanding of the study session was to inform the council on something that they were concerned with and hear all sides of it and come to an informed decision, and I believe that's what we all should try to do. That's why I prepared to speak tonight if I was allowed to speak, and I appreciate you giving that. My name's Bob Sorensen, I am the President of the Retirees Organization. I'm standing here today representing the retirees of the City of Independence. I represent those individuals that served this city for most of their working life. They served the city as I did for many years, many more than mayors, council members, and many staff mayor members ever served the city. These retired employees were given a benefit by the city, not by them, but by the city, to have health insurance throughout their career and through retirement. That was a promise made to this, by the city to them. Since 2019, the city has continued to make the retirees of the city to be the villains and the people responsible for the financial problems of the city. This is the furthest, furthest thing from the truth. What is currently taking place with the Staywell Health Plan is totally the fault of the city, not the retirees or the active employees. In 2019, when in someone's wisdom, staff, council, whoever, the city attempted to defund the post-65 retirees' health insurance. At that time, the city stated that, that this would save the city five million dollars and that they not, did not have to keep their promise. As we all know, that, that did not go so well with the retirees. With direction from the mayor and council at that time, a group was formed by the city, staff, and members of the, of the organization I represent to find a solution. This group was successful and found a solution that benefited both sides. The city made the statement that they were still able to save 3.5 million dollars. The city even recognized our group at the 2020 Chamber of Commerce meeting. This is important because during this, the meeting that came to that conclusion, I, along with other members of my committee, told the city that this change to the Staywell by removing the 65 retirees would destroy the Staywell program. A council member at that time also attended almost all the meetings that I attended with the city to come to the solution that we came up to. That council member also stated during those meetings that if we did what we were proposing to do with the post-65, it was going to destroy Staywell. I was told after those, I made those comments, that it was not my problem of what effect removing 65 retirees was to the Staywell program. My issue only was post-65 retirees. I was also told that it would not have any negative effect on the Staywell program, and I was told that it would be a push and everything would be fine. So now we are here today, two and a half years after the post-65 people were removed on January 1st of 2020. We see what situation the Staywell insurance is in. What needs to be said here is, the, what the post-65 retirees were being charged prior to, in 2019, that was positive money for the Staywell. Yes, a lot of that money was from the city in the, in their eighty percent portion of the premiums and twenty percent of the retirees, but that was positive money that was not being used by post-65 because they were now on Medicare, and they only needed twenty percent of their insurance coverage. You remove the positive money from a fund and replaced it with nothing. So now all you had is people in the fund that didn't have the money that was being provided by post-65 anymore, and the fund, as we know, from January 1st of 2020, has went tremendously in the hole. That is the reason Staywell is where it's at today. If you take that three and a half million dollars that was called savings, which I would not call it savings, I don't, I don't think it needed any more money, if that three and a half million dollars, along with the twenty percent additional premiums from the employees that were currently still in Staywell, was applied, that would have consisted of about four million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year to pay bills. Multiply that by 2.5, you're going to have well over ten million, almost eleven million dollars. We talked about the COVID money being used for Staywell to keep it alive today. Yes, it has been, and I really do appreciate that the council has done that, but had you had this ten million dollars that should have been left in Staywell to pay the bills, not asking for more, an increase to anything, just leaving it there because it was there before, I don't believe you'd have to place that COVID money in there. I believe the plan would be still functioning. It might not be functioning great, but it sure wouldn't be going bankrupt because you have not put ten million dollars of COVID money into the account. Those are things I felt needed to be said at this meeting, because it's not only, yes, is it a mess? Yes, I would agree with you, Mayor, Council, the Staywell situation is a disaster, it is going bankrupt. I would agree a wholeheartedly with that, but there's a reason why we're here today, and this, that is the reason. I just, I, I know, I, a lot of things were presented by the Speaker from CBIZ, who spoke on behalf of the city. I've had conversations with some of them on the phone, as you had pointed out, Mayor. I was very bothered to pull up a council agenda for the study session on Thursday and see what was on it, and I saw the Staywell presentation that was made by Staywell, I'm familiar with it, I'm not standing here in supportive or non-supportive, but I was just familiar with it. And then see after, after business hours on Friday, a thirty-some-page document be placed on the agenda of basically what I looked at is a proposal from the city staff. Very hard to have a lot of time to digest all that, but I have tried. I don't believe any scenario that's presented to you currently, prior to the Staywell's presentation or currently with the cities is an answer to what you're looking for. You all have brought up points when the man from CBIZ stood here, you brought up points about HSA funding, I think you really need to think about that. You brought up points about the premiums. I do not understand, and I will look you all in the face and do not understand, how you keep separating pre-65 retirees. Do you realize what you're doing when you, when you do this and when they make presentations like this? If I'm a sixty-two-year-old employee and I didn't want to retire and I'm still working, which I can, but if I'm a sixty-two-year-old that decided to retire, I'm going to charge those two people a different rate? They're the same age with the same insurance policy, but they're going to pay a different rate? That's never been done here. How wrong is that? I think insurance is based on age, not whether you're currently working or not working, but we're going to separate in this new proposal, we're separating them out. Every premium for every group, OAP2, OAP1, every one, the retiree is paying more. So if I'm sixty-two and working, I'm cheaper than if I'm sixty-two and retired? That's never been done. That makes absolutely no sense, and you need to look at that rate sheet too. The new plan that they're saying, I'm not opposed to the new high-deductible plan, if somebody wants to go to that and it, it works better for the city, it works better for the employee, I'm good with that. Pull out that sheet. If you're an individual and you choose the new high-deductible plan, you have a zero premium, and if you're retired, you pay a hundred and seventeen dollars a month for the same plan? I'm not understanding those figures very well. There seems to be a lot of issues with those figures. They don't make a lot of sense to me. Yes, things need to be done, things need to be adjusted, but they need to be, if they're going to be done and adjusted, they need, need to be done fairly to all people that are affected, and that these scenarios, this last scenario from the city does not address things fairly at all. The HSA money, Mr. Perk, I, I guess I shouldn't say it, council, a councilman brought up the HSA money. Do you, if you look at these premiums that are being posted on these plans, and you look at the hu, huge increases that are happening to OAP1, a reasonable man is going to know that there's some people that can't afford those rate increases. They are going to move plans. I believe in the retiree group with the new rates that are being proposed, there will be a massive movement. If there's a massive movement, they're going to move to something cheaper that they can afford with a higher deductible. Those plans require HSA money. Last year, when you had movement of twenty percent of the people moved last year from OAP1 to OAP2 and Local Plus, you had twenty percent move to those plans just over the premium increases from last year. HSA money was around three hundred and some thousand dollars that the city had, that the Staywell Committee had to come up with to put in HSA accounts. If you approve these plans that are being proposed today, I believe you have a chance of bankrupting the plan on January 2nd, because there is no way, given the balances in the Staywell account right now, that you will have the money to pay the HSA funds out of the Staywell. I also, if you will do a little research, as was brought up, last year, one of the biggest hits to OAP1 and the Staywell plan was January. Think about this, and I'm, I believe these people will, can verify as I go to every Staywell Committee, we are still paying out for Vision out of Staywell, and it ended January 1, unless you bought it for yourself personally. We are still paying for that. Why is that? Because when the city said we're removing the Vision plan, you know what everybody did? My wife's the same. She went and got glasses in December because she had the coverage and she wasn't going to have it January 1. Do we think maybe a lot of people might have done that? Okay, that's the scenario for Vision, and that's not very expensive. Think about this, if you do these premium adjustments you're talking about doing, my wife had cancer and she's been cancer-free for nine years, I can talk about my family without getting in trouble. She likes to have a CAT scan every so often to make sure the cancer hasn't come back. If you do what you're suggesting here, I'm going to tell you, my wife's going to make sure she has her CAT scan in December, because I don't even think I can afford your OAP1, what you're doing to it, and I'm probably going to have to go to OAP2, so you know what I'm going to do? And what all these employees that can't afford these premiums are going to do? I want to, I can't wait to see the bills in January to come in from the December treatments that are going to happen, because people are going to have to go to a high-deductible plan because they can't afford what you're suggesting here, and the premiums are unfair. And that's going to happen, and now if you get out this HSA money, and I think it was brought up, what are we going to do with these great bill? If you have to put out all this HSA fund because now over fifty percent are in HSA accounts, and you get these huge bills in January because everybody that was at OAP1 that's getting ready to leave it, they're going to go do everything they need medically done before this January 1st, you tell me how the plan can survive? It can't survive. These plans that are being given to you from Staywell, from the city, the scenarios from CBIZ, they're not taking that into consideration. And I'll end by just saying, I hope Mike Veet is on listening, he had a right to be here, we discussed the plan that he, his committee was told to present. I'm not standing here to support his plan or not support his plan, but he had a right to be here and he had a right to speak. A lot of pressure was put on his committee, some people are going to say his committee didn't do their job. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, I've said, I stood here and I saw what the city manager said when he said, "I need a million ninety thousand dollars structural change savings in this plan." I can tell you right now, I can give you structural savings of well over that to the city, not to any employees, easily, but nobody wants to hear. Nobody wants to go to eighty-twenty splits on everything, which is what the city should be doing, not eighty-two-eighteens and eighty-six-fourteens, and now an eighty-seven-thirteen. They only have to do eighty-twenty, there's three or four hundred thousand dollars for the city in their pocket that they don't have to be spending, that's savings. The pharmacy plan, seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a structural change to the Staywell Committee, to the Staywell thing. There's your million one. You want to throw out the HSA funding that doesn't have to be given, there's another four hundred. You want a million ninety? I can give you a million five in structural changes right here in front of you today, but nobody wants to hear it and they don't, they don't want that money, they want other money. That's unfair to the Staywell Committee. I'll end there, but I think it was wrong that Mike Veet wasn't here, and I believe that the, I hope that the city council takes the time, when they want to talk about this huge impact of the city on this healthcare, they actually take the time to look at, how do we fix it? How did it get broke? And let everybody participate in that, we could have been doing this for the last two years and nobody's made any effort to try to fix it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Okay. We'll proceed, what is the next item on the agenda? EDC discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Veet was not available. We reached out to him and he was not available to talk online, so.
That's, that was my, yes.
Okay, thank you. So are we going to have the EDC discussion now, is that the point?
Yes, I believe that's the next item on the agenda.
Go ahead and frame it up for us.
I, I don't want to supersede Councilmember Perkins, if you're okay. All right, as, as the council knows, back on June 21st, you passed a resolution regarding economic development services in the city. Part of that resolution directed the city manager to solicit proposals from both the Chamber of Commerce as well as the Economic Development Corporation for how they would propose delivering those economic development services. Councilmember Perkins and I were at the EDC board meeting last week. They would like to have some additional time to finalize their conversation and discussion. We do have a proposal in hand from the Chamber of Commerce about what their operating agreement with the city would look like, but the EDC has asked for additional time. I believe the nature of our conversation was to try to get this, be cognizant of the fact that Santa Calagon obviously requires a large community focus to, to deliver that in the fashion that we expect. I'm having a hard time hearing myself think here.
Okay. If we can get more, please, thank you.
Thank you. So if we could have forty-five to sixty days, again, there's a budgetary savings in the adopted budget associated with this, so the ability to move fast on this would be prudent, but also recognizing that this is a major shift potentially in how the city operates and its strategic partnerships, we do think additional time may be merited to deliver sound recommendation to the council.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, proceed.
I know you're excited, I'm about to say. I'm about to say something. I just want to counsel, and I want everybody listening to know, that well over a year ago, I met with Steve Mauer. This was before the budget for the preceding year. And I told him, Mr. Mauer is the chairman of the EDC Board, I told him I was not satisfied with the performance of the EDC, and this is after a particularly bad hire as the director. And I asked him for a plan. I said, "Please, give me a plan where the EDC is going to do something differently, something better, something innovative, and be functional, and provide the value that our taxpayers pay for this service." And here we are, 16 months later, two months past our budget, two months past the item that the council passed, saying, "Get your proposal done," and now we need more time. I'm very familiar with the concept of continuances. Every lawyer is, including Mr. Mauer. So instead of doing what I would normally do and being even more condemning or judgmental, I will simply say, "I am incredibly disappointed and embarrassed with this request and by the performance of the EDC." This is legit healthcare money every year that gets paid to fund the EDC. We are getting, as we see today, virtually no value for it. So I am not going to lodge a formal objection or jump up and down and stomp my feet, should the will of the council be to give them more time. The fact that they've asked for it, though, is a complete and utter failure. Thank you.
Any other discussions, questions? Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the EDC Board, and the discussion points was more of my suggestion, because of the discussion the board had was, there was just not an ability to connect with the members of the Chamber of Commerce. To no fault of anyone's own, there was attempts made, just the meetings have not, were not set, so I think there is some strong wills on both parties to meet, confer, let's discuss, and bring something together. So there is an EDC and Chamber Board meeting, August 16th, to start that discussion. So the thought was just to kick it out, just a little bit longer to do so.
Any other discussion?
Just to comment to Mr. Hobart's comments, and that is that, just as a reminder, we did stop payment to EDC for, you know, that we, the payments we've been making, and so we are in a position that we're not continuing to make those payments, and so I think that's a good thing.
And I think that's the will the council, too, is not proceed with any payments until there's come some agreement, is what I'm hearing. Okay? Very good. Any other further discussion on this? Okay, so we'll probably draft up a resolution on that, extend it, is what I'm hearing you say, Councilmember Perkins. Okay. Any other further discussion, questions on that? No further discussion, questions? We have board commission reports.
We have a few boards and commissions that we're looking to add a resolution to the next agenda. The first is the Housing Authority Commissioners. Mayor Rowland is recommending appointing Donald Perrin. If there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Any objections? Councilmember Steinmeier, Councilmember Hobart? Okay, we'll proceed. Thank you.
Next is the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. Councilmember Hobart is recommending appointing Bruce Frakes. If there's no objection, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Any objections? Hearing none? Thank you.
And finally, the Animal Welfare Committee. Mayor Rowland is recommending appointing Miriam Keith. If there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Anyone questions, comments, concerns, objections? Hearing none? Okay, we'll be ready to go.
Thank you.
With, if I'm understanding anything else on the agenda, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.